Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Mr. New. Thank you very much. Okay, let the roll call show that everyone is present, please Gloria.
Mayor McFarland, I would move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from August 5th, 2019, and that we accept for the record the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes June 4th, Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes, May 18th, Park and Recreation Advisory Board minutes, May 2nd, as they are scheduled.
2nd. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Claims for the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the claims dated July 31st and August 13th as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the claims against the city. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval, I don't have any changes. Larry, does staff have any changes?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay. I'll move, take a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So move?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting agenda is approved. We do have a special presentation tonight. I do want to kind of call out, not kind of call out, I want to call out Katie Vazquez. Katie, I see you in the audience there. And really, thank you for the whole shop local program and all the work that you did on it. And Rena, thank you for your support on that project as well. I did do the passport thing, but I only went to two places. I was not good. So, and I know several of us, or a couple of people were out of town, so. But it's a great idea. Think we can learn from what you did and maybe make it better next time we try it, so. Maybe make it a little longer and maybe on a different weekend. But, all in all, the idea was fantastic, and I hope that the merchants who you did work with, you know, appreciated the work that you put into it.
So I have kind of a presentation to do for you guys tonight.
There's, here's Katie.
Which is just like a year review of what I've done. So I started in August of last year, and I got hired to start a shop local campaign, which I had no idea, in a way, what I was doing, but it was okay. Let me see. So when I started, I was hired to start a committee. And it was really hard, because in a lot of ways, I didn't have a lot for a committee to decide on. And so that's why it was very hard to form the committee. And then on top of that, because of, you know, city rules and regulations, which are good, that we have those in place, it was just going to be very hard for me to do that while being with the city. So we decided the best thing for me was to find a different organization to be with. So they put me with Main Street, which I love Rena, and she's wonderful to me. And so, after, but when I was still with the city, I got invited to be a part of HLI, thanks to Lisa Fitzgibbons. So I graduated from HLI, and then also I was able to attend one of the Alliance's conferences.
HLI.
HLI is the Hispanic Leadership Institute, yeah. And so when I was one-
That's everybody else's edification.
Oh, yes. When I was with one of the Alliance's conferences, I was also invited to attend, it's called the Sanford Institute of Philanthropy. And so that is six months long, and it's 80 hours. So that was a really long course. But they teach you a lot about nonprofits, and, you know, how to better your, and all of that that involves. So I graduated from HLI, and then I also graduated from Sanford. In November, we had Small Business Saturday, and I was able to get 17 small businesses involved with that, and then give away prizes, just to try to get the motivation for people to, you know, shop small on Small Business Saturday. Mayor and Donna McBride were there. And then, these are just some of the graphics that I've made. So I posted these on my Facebook, and then I also made gift tags. So in December, I passed out to all our local merchants, gift tags for them. So it said, if you bought a gift from a small business, it said, this gift was bought at a small business. So people would realize, you can buy these things locally, you don't have to, you know, buy them online or whatever. And then in January, I was invited from Helen to attend the Home and Garden Show. And so I did a kind of like interactive booth, where I had all these little marbles, and so you would have to vote on your answers. And I did things like, what do you think, like, your sales tax pays for? And what do you think it goes towards? Just so people realize, if you shop at a small business, you're supporting your police department, and fire department, and Parks and Rec, all that stuff. And then February, well, February was actually when I was at the Robeson Ranch, which had a huge number of attendance for the senior expos that they do. And then in March, I actually graduated from the Sanford Institute of Philanthropy, which was a very long process, but it was good. In April, I had a community banking event, where I tried to teach people that if you keep your money in a local bank, instead of one of the big banks, it will help your community a lot more, because community banks are the ones that give out smaller loans, they give out farm loans, just tons of things that people don't even think about if they keep their money in a big bank. And then May and June, I really started to prepare for my Independence Week, and that's when I really started to like get all the graphics ready for it, and the promotional items. I started to go to all of the businesses. I ended up having 18 businesses that were going to be a part of the passport. And so then, the week of July, I had 18 locations. And those 18 locations, they generated $3,661.24, which was a good, a really good thing. I mean, obviously, I was hoping for more, but for it being a holiday weekend, and so many of you, so many people being out of town, it was really good to see that some people were really trying to stick with the passport. I had some passports that had at least eight to nine locations. So that means that they like had stickers from all those different locations. And it was just really good to see that people wanted to go around, and they wanted to support it, and they wanted to, you know, support all these looks. And so then, a week after this was done, I had a prize drawing event. And we had, I think, 30 people in attendance or so. And so then we gave away all the prizes that we had. And the prizes that we had were $1,500 worth of prizes, which was really good. And it was really nice, because at least five of the people that won were there. So it was nice to like be able to hand them a prize. And then, just, oh, well, this is video that I created with Sanford.
Where's the volume?
I don't know.
You might have to wait.
Well, I have to start it over and then. Well, it's kind of hard. And on top of that, I was super nervous when I was making the video. Not that great.
Oops.
Steve's doing undercover work now.
Yeah. Larry, you never got out of the IT business, did you?
You know Larry, you've always got a job with us, no matter what. Job security.
Still not working?
No.
Still not working?
Cotton's getting some good publicity.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wow. It really is. Yeah, I didn't know that it's really good, so.
Maybe you've heard of narrator.
Okay, well, in this video, I just pretty much said why you should shop local. And the reason why you should shop local is because it really supports our economy. If you spend money at a big box, or if you spend money online, it's just a small percentage of it goes back into your community. Whereas if you shop at a small business, so much more of it is going to go back into your community, because those are the people that, if you go to them and you ask them to sponsor your little league team, or if you ask them to be a part of, you know, the summer passport thing that I was doing, they're the ones that are going to say yes. Whereas Walmart, they're not as much. I mean, maybe they'll sponsor you, but they don't really care about why they're in your community. They just are there because they're going to make money. And so, I tried to make this video with them, and I think in the end, I ended up having like 1,500 views on this video, which was pretty good, and I was happy with it. I wasn't the top three, the top three. They got to compete onward, and then when they won, an ad in the-
If I told you, you could give a gift, mercy-
I already narrated. We have to keep going. No. So, this past week, I ended up going to the Rural Policy Forum in Eager, Arizona. And so that was three days long, and that's when I was presented with my Vista Alumni Shirt and my Certificate of Completion. And then I also just liked that picture of me and Matt and Mayor, because I love CG. Because I really do love where I'm from, and I hope that it keeps growing, and I hope to see it do well, because I really do want to be a part of it, and want to see it do well. So I just want to say thank you to the city, and to Main Street and Rena, because she has been a wonderful boss to me. And I also want to say thank you to the mayor, because you've been wonderful. And Larry, and Stephen, and also Robin, who is my Vista Va- boss, as well as Lisa, and Fernando, because he supported me as well, and Selena, because you've been so nice to me, and Matt, because you've always supported me. So, thank you all so much, and I hope that I continue to work in the city.
Thank you.
And if anyone wants any of these, I have like 5,000 passport stickers, because the stickers that I ordered-
Save them.
They were way too big to fit on the passports, so I ended up having to use Avery Dots. So now I just have like thousands of stickers. Someone's wanting me to-
Yeah. National night out. National night out.
Thank you, Katie.
Really quickly, can I comment, or no? Oh, you know Katie, I just want to thank you for your energy, and, you know, just to come in, and like you said, you had no idea what you were doing, but it is such an important part of, you know, how the city is funded. And it's nice to see someone young like you, that's sending that message out. So I hope it was a great experience, and I know, you know, you're, just your vision of where to go next, and, you know, your communication with, you know, the community is really important, so please keep it up. Because you did a great job, so, thank you.
Thanks again, Katie. Anybody else? Reach out. All right. Next item is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call, vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to remove, or change?
G1.
G1. Okay. So pull G1 off. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, then. Do I need a more?
No, I move for the adoption of the consent agenda with the exception of G1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda then is G1.
Who took that off? I'll tell you why I took G1 off, is the, we've been through this, Larry, with Martin, the Martin family, and getting a hold of the land, but they still wanted the building there, and we've accommodated that, and what I just, hoping this will kind of open the door for some more progress there, to remove that and clean up that lot, and then we're doing things in the park, and we paved the roads, I mean, we're going to really, Mayor's going to make some points on the south side of town. So that's why I pulled it off, because I think it's, it's really an opportunity for us to take advantage of that location.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Okay, then Gloria, consider an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 3143, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the acquisition of real property from Jeannie Martin, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $7,500 plus closing costs, and execution of the necessary documents by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3143 as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protan McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next is item H, which is public comments. So this is the part of the meeting where we'll open the floor to the public, and if there's anyone here who would like to speak, now's the opportunity. Typically, these items are not agendized, so the council cannot comment on, on any public comments that may be made, but we will take note, and if necessary, direct staff to get back to you if there's some action that needs to be taken. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up, please do so. State your name and your address, please, and you have, please try and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, staff. My name is William Bailey. I reside in Arizona City, Arizona, and you're wondering why I'm here tonight.
We welcome everyone.
Pardon?
We welcome everyone.
Thank you. And you do not have to return my phone call, Mayor.
I came back from vacation, I got like-
I understand you were tubing, and I'm jealous. Actually, the reason I'm here is I'm a director with HOHP Veterans Center here in Casa Grande. For those in the audience that might not know what HOHP stands for, the primary word with a first H is helping our heroes of Pinot County. I had the opportunity last week to meet with one of our decorated Korean War veterans, who resides at 3384 East Roper Road, which is out behind Robeson Ranch. It's on acreage. His property has horses, his neighbors have horses. So that kind of gives you some idea of what the property's like. It was brought to my attention by Leonard and Barb Walker, that they received a code compliance letter. And they were both visibly, in my opinion, shaking at the content of that letter. I basically kind of glanced through it, and noticed that it basically said, "You have 30 days to correct these code violations, otherwise we're going to fine you $3,000." Now, I don't like to disclose my age, and I'm not going to disclose their actual ages, but Mr. Leonard's in his 80s. And when you receive a letter like that in the mail, younger folks seem to take it with a little stride. Us older folks, we kind of sit there and shake in our boots going, oh my God. First of all, Mr. Leonard and Mrs. Leonard are disabled. I don't know if you saw them come in tonight, but they're both in motorized scooters. And that's how you get around their property. The code issue was too much debris in the yard, down trees, shrubs, and that they had a manure pile on their property. And I physically looked at this property, the manure pile probably wasn't any taller than this, and maybe eight to 10 feet wide. I stood out there, and of course, maybe my senses aren't the sharpest, but I sure didn't detect any odor from that manure pile, but apparently that was included in the complaint. I can tell you from my own personal experience in Arizona City, I am new to the RV travel trailer group, and I have a nice RV on my property, but we've had issues in our city where a neighbor, someone a mile away drives by your house, they don't like the looks of that trailer. First call goes to code compliance in Pinot County. Before you know it, you have a code inspector out there writing you a summons for, you know, your trailer. You're going, why? Okay? But anyway, getting back to the letter that they received, and I want to thank my cohort in crime, Dave Glad, for informing me prior to the meeting that a lot of this issue has been resolved, at least probably 95% of it, to my knowledge. And I did talk to Leonard tonight. He informs me that the cleanup is just pretty much complete. You know, a disabled veteran doesn't draw a lot of money monthly for income, through his disability, et cetera. And all I want to do tonight is ask code compliance to communicate a little bit better with the people who they issue summons to. I believe Mrs. Walker's going to come up and talk to you about some of her experiences, which I think you need to listen to. But with that in mind, I was glad to hear the progress that was made tonight, and I just want you to understand that I felt the best way to handle the cleanup would be to wait until October, maybe, and burn it. It would have been gone in five minutes. But it's been brought to my attention, and it's been taken care of. They had had to hire somebody to come out and actually physically remove the stuff from the property, and to them, that was a great expense. So with that, I just want to say thank you for your time. Thank you for listening, and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Bailey. I think I do have, I do have another speaker card here, Barb Walker. Would you like to come? There you go. I don't think so. You can point it down. If you point it down, yeah. Here, I'll tip this over.
I'm Barbara Walker. And as he just told you, I live at 3384 East Roper's Road. We have a property next to us that we and some of our neighbors had been putting the cuttings off of our trees when we've thrown them, and that sort of thing, thinking that we could dispose of them at some other time. I had talked to the city, and they couldn't bring the chipper in off of the road. It has to stay on city property. And they could not help me, but they did give me some suggestions. And it wasn't but two or three weeks later that here comes the code enforcement letter. And we didn't know what we were not in compliance with. The letter doesn't say, unless somebody understands all these numbers that they had in the letter. 8.12.040 public nuisance. And one of the things is disposing of erecting and maintaining unpermissible things, and there's all kinds of stuff, that none of them appeared to apply to our situation. So I called the man that sent this, and it took me almost two weeks to get through to him. There was always, he was in a meeting, or he was out of the office, or whatever, but he never returned my calls. And when he did, I asked him what my non-compliance was. And he started telling me I had poisonous plants, which I do not have. It's in our covenants, there will be no poisonous plants of any kind, even the pretty ones that people plant. If they're poisonous, it's against our homeowner covenants. But anyway, he said tall weeds, and grass, and some tree nemes. And I says, is that all? And he says, well, anything that doesn't belong there. Well, I don't know what belongs there and doesn't belong there, it all came naturally. But anyhow. I tried to get everything under the sun, everybody under the sun. I tried tree removal companies, I tried landscapers. I tried some private people that advertise, they'll clean your yards, and they'll clean up brush and stuff. Nobody. It wasn't until three or four days before our deadline, that somebody did come out. He worked one day and wouldn't come back. And I then found another person that did come back, has done a marvelous job, and I'm now in compliance. But it's beyond the time limit. Am I still going to be, have a lien on my property? Because I did not comply within the time that I was supposed to? That's one of my big questions. I was supposed to have it done by the 14th. I'm only three days over. I don't believe that the $3,000 is warranted, because there's nothing for you as a city to clean up, unless there's stuff he didn't tell me about. We've got all kinds of property that's not in compliance. We have some properties that have grass three foot high. They're not getting hassled. We have others with dead trees and weeds and everything, right next to a hay supply outfit. If that grass goes up in flames, the hay's going to get burned too. Another, one is running a welding business, and that is not business property out there. But it's not in compliance.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes.
Because they're over your three minutes, by about three minutes.
Oh, we have a special use permit for us to have campers in our place. Oh, we have a special use permit for us to have campers in our place. And I just wanted to make sure that compliance understands that because the county does not allow trailers on people's property to be resided in. And I don't want him coming back and getting me for that. I wanted to help see if we couldn't get the compliance, the code enforcement, to be more specific on what they want people to do rather than a bunch of numbers that we can't decipher and when we call in, they can't decipher. So I'm just asking for help from other people. Mine's over with now, I hope.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, just to direct staff, you would maybe follow up with them on that. She has some good suggestions. Pictures also say a thousand words, so.
Mr. Mayor, is Ms. Walker's telephone number on the document there by chance?
It is.
Okay, perfect.
And I'll leave you both these, Mr. Bailey's and Ms. Walker's. Thank you all for your comments. Does anybody else have anything that they else, they would like to say we still have the floor open? So it's open for anyone on any subject. Okay, well, seeing none, then I'll close the floor to public comments and we'll move to our first item under item I, I-1. Mr. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Rush Truck Centers of Phoenix in an amount not to exceed $401,086 for the purchase of two Peterbilt cab-over engine chassis with Spartan roll-off bodies for the use of our sanitation operations. This is part of our replacement program. The units that are being replaced are unit 553, which was a 2010 auto car, which suffered a massive failure of its engine and has been out of service since last year. Actually just sold that vehicle at auction for $40,000, which is the highest we've gotten for a vehicle like that in a while, so that was good news. And then unit 5200, which was a 2009 auto car with over 75,000 miles on it. Both of these vehicles meet our replacement program and funds have been budgeted for in this fiscal year for this replacement. We are asking to use the, where is it here? The Arizona State Contract Number CTR 041812 for these purchases. That's the most physically responsible way for us to purchase these vehicles. And I did want to note that on both this RCA and the next RCA that you're going to consider with these purchases, these two trucks, both of their upfits are going to be done here in Casa Grande at a new business that is located here, Spartan Truck Center. And they're located on VIP Boulevard. For these two trucks, that equates to about $41,450 worth of work here locally, so good news. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions on these two? Are you used to war?
These are our roll-off trucks. So those are the large dumpsters that we leave on construction sites around town. A lot of our businesses use the larger compaction devices for their businesses, and then we use those to haul out to the landfill.
Okay. Matt?
Kevin, are we still getting a lot of use out of these with the competition that's going on with the roll-offs? Are we still standing there pretty good?
Yeah, we've stayed very competitive. Business has not slowed down with our roll-off activities. We've not seen any decline. As a matter of fact, with the one truck being down, we've actually had to flex our schedules with some of our employees so that we could use that one truck longer periods of time, not just during our normal working hours. So it's been a challenge, so we're looking forward to this.
Yeah, that was my concern if we really needed the two, but it sounds like it.
Yes, we do.
All right. Any other questions? All right, then Gloria, entertain an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 3153, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Rush Truck Centers of Arizona, Inc. for the purchase of two 2020 Peterbilt 520 chassis with roll-off bodies, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $401,068, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Rush Truck Centers of Arizona, Inc. in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona State bid list.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3153 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Gloria, can a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, item I-2, another ordinance 3150.
Thank you. Next time, this will be on the same RCA as the last one. I didn't realize this until after it was already into the system. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Rush Truck Center of Phoenix in amount not to exceed $296,112 for the purchase of a Peterbilt 520 cab-over engine chassis and a front-load EZ-PAC refuse body for our sanitation division. These front-loads are the vehicles that we use to service the six-to-12-yard front-load dumpsters at a lot of our businesses. You'll see the dumpster enclosures and those are the trucks that lift it over the top and then into the hopper bed. Again, this is, the EZ-PAC front-load refuse body will be installed by Spartan Trucks, again, out on VIP Boulevard through this contract, and we're using the same state contract for this purchase. Unit 556, which was a 2007 auto car, had 134,000 miles on it and it definitely meets all the criteria for replacement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, seeing no questions, then can I get an ordinance number, please? Go ahead.
Ordinance number 3150, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Rush Truck Centers of Arizona, Inc. for the purchase of a 2020 Peterbilt 520 chassis with front-load refuse body, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $296,112, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Rush Truck Centers of Arizona, Inc. in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona State bid list.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3150 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is I-3, consider ordinance number 3151. Selena, is that yours?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, staff recommends that council approve the use of the CDWG contract vehicle administered by the National IPA for the city of Mesa. I actually have three requests on the agenda tonight, and if the council pleases, I would like to address them all at once because they have the same contract vehicle and the same drivers justifying kind of our request. Item I-3 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of mobile technology. So these are the ruggedized and semi-ruggedized laptops that go in the public safety vehicles as well as the planning and development code enforcement vehicles. It's for the purchase of the hardware and software in amount not to exceed $78,000. That's for 13 units. We have 91 units total citywide. I-4 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of desktop and laptop computer hardware and software in the amount not to exceed $126,000. This is for 112 units. We have 562 total. Both I-3 and I-4 are actually Phase III of a program that we started in fiscal year 18 when we kicked off a five-year replacement program. I-5 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a firewall cybersecurity threat protection appliance to replace our current unit in the amount not to exceed $46,300. All of these requested purchases are for components of our overall IT strategic plan. They're designed to provide sustainability and fiscal responsibility in our replacement program. As I mentioned before, it started in fiscal year 18 and is really focused on ensuring that we proactively manage the changes in technology. And you'll see that when I talk about the drivers. In addition to the planned goals, the five main drivers behind the timing in our request are, one, the anticipated end of extended support for Windows 7. That happens in 2020. When that happens, we won't have any more security patches for Windows 7, which creates a significant security and data integrity risk. Second, we were unable to upgrade our existing equipment due to the advanced age of that. Third, we wanted to achieve standardization of equipment, which provides efficiencies in being able to maintain the equipment and push out different changes in security patches. Fourth, we wanted to address the security concerns presented by the different cybersecurity statutes that have been presented and by the comments that we receive from DPS and ACJIS. They feel that if we don't upgrade before the end of life in 2020, that could possess, that could present a risk. And then lastly, just to ensure that we are able to use our different technologies, for example, the Tyler CAT RMS system, the e-citation, and then if we move on with the dashpams and things like that. The old equipment, when we evaluate that for replacement, we look at it for salvage value, so we take either parts or components. Then we look to see if the unit is in somewhat good condition. We actually use that as a temporary replacement for a unit that may not be replaced for a couple of months, or we actually retire or dispose of the equipment. The third component, which I had mentioned, was really the replacement for our cybersecurity piece. We call that the checkpoint hardware. We want to move to the next-generation checkpoint product, which is 6500. And really, they call this the Generation 5 version. As we progress, these generally last about five years, and so we're starting to lag behind the technology that can prevent different malicious internet and software threats as far as malware, ransomware, and destructive ware. And so the product that we are looking at will actually provide content security, so protect the computers, the operating systems, the files. They'll help us disarm and reconstruct any data that may have been compromised, protect our applications, provide data incident handling, and then also integrate with our other tools, whether those are our Cisco or terminal servers and things like that. As far as the need for that, we did also include in the request for council action kind of what our typical month looks like as far as security risks. We experienced around 19,000 severe security events, 15,000 high-security events, and 4,000 medium-security events. So it's just something that keeps hitting with today's technology. So in summary, I just wanted to summarize that I-3, again, is for the mobile technology, so that's the ruggedized and semi-ruggedized laptops. The price includes equipment plus an allowance for the installation, and then a lot of times we have to replace the GPS antennas. I-4 includes the equipment plus a minor allowance should we need to change kind of the model. What we're doing is we're going in and making sure that the desktops and laptops are fully utilized. If someone has two units, we suggest that they move to one mobile unit with a docking station, just to decrease the fleet and maintain the efficiencies. And then I-5 includes the equipment plus an allowance for travel costs if we need onsite professional services, and then any modifications to the implementation because sometimes when you do a critical piece of technology, the scope kind of expands a little bit. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Selena, this is part of the CIP plan, right?
That's correct.
Mr. Bob?
Well, you'd probably be some help profession I am with IT, but I have a couple of questions. What does ruggedized mean?
So basically, the laptop is covered with a protective shield, and so you'll see that it protects it from heat within the vehicles or if they're dropped or sustained any damage.
Okay. And then patching, I've heard that on, actually today, and patching is taking care of threats that you have?
Absolutely. So as new threats are introduced, the companies who provide the cybersecurity send out what they call a patch to kind of block that little, that little gap that may be there from new technology and new threats.
Proud of you.
I know you.
Hey, Bailey, have any questions?
You're a good influence on a man.
I noticed when you started off speaking about this, you said it was year three and a five-year replacement. Does that allow for any new equipment? And where I'm going is, I understood there was a memory issue for the, for public safety, and I was curious if there was anything in here that addresses that or if that's addressed at some point.
So for the police department, we actually moved from the CF-31 to the CF-33, and we did that by specing out what they anticipated to be their upcoming technology. And so the older units did have some limitations, and so this would take care of those limitations. Now, if we introduce new technology or new programs, we'll have to, we assess each of those requests to see, but these are upgradable equipment. And so, and because they're standardized, it's a lot easier for us to kind of change the equipment rather than having to start the fleet over.
Okay, the model numbers that you stated, are those servers' memory or are those cameras or what?
So those are actually just the model numbers that Panasonic assigns to the ruggedized laptops. So the difference being the CF-31 is not as, not as aggressive as a CF-33. And so it's just basically based on technology needs. So the fire department generally has a CF-31, so does the code enforcement, and then the police department because they use more technologies, the CF-33.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing one of these one at a time. So I-3 ordinance, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3151, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from CDW Government LLC for the purchase of mobile technology hardware and software, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $78,000, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to CDW Government LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move for passage of ordinance number 3151 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, and take I-4, ordinance number 3152.
Ordinance number 32, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from CDW Government LLC for the purchase of computer hardware and software, authorizing expenditure of public funds not to exceed $126,000, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to CDW Government LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3152 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, I-5 is resolution number 5196. Can I get a number, please?
Resolution number 5196, a resolution of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from CDW Government LLC for the purchase of checkpoint 6500-plus software, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $46,300, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to CDW Government LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5196 as presented.
Second.
Could I ask a question before we vote?
Sure.
Ransomware is attacking a lot of smaller communities now, especially in Texas. And one of the groups that done it, that does it, has accumulated like $3 billion and decided that crime does pay, and I think they're leaving the country. But are we protected? Do we patch these things or?
Yeah, so the version that we're requesting, the 6500, is I-5, so they consider that the solution for what they call mega or multi, multifaceted attacks. And so this is kind of the highest level that's out there and available. As new technology keeps coming up, you know, that's where the patches come in place because they're, they're trying to outrun the thieves, right? So, but this, this, we believe it provides the best So but this this, we believe it provides the best protection that we can get.
You're pretty comfortable that we're okay with this as far as?
Yes, what what's great is we we do regular testing as well, as far as vulnerabilities with people and systems. And so when we implement this, the if they come do professional services, they'll actually test it, and then we have the piece where we actually test our own employees to see if they're clicking on bad things, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item K. K one is authorization submission for applications for state housing funds. I believe this is you, Mary Allen.
It is. Hello. We are seeking authorization to apply for the home and state housing fund in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. The Arizona Department of Housing receives the funds from HUD, and it's they put it out as a competitive bid, so we want to apply. We hope to rehabilit- owner occupied housing rehabilitation projects, four to six projects for the year. To make us competitive, though, we we need to leverage funds. They they require for points to 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 gain extra points, we have to leverage funds. So fortunately, we have some CDBG money we can use, the fifty thousand dollars that was in our annual action plan for the owner occupied housing. We also have the administration for owner occupied or CDBG that we can utilize. We have fifteen thousand dollars from CARA for leverage for weatherization. We have twenty thousand dollars from our program income. It's a revolving loan fund for housing projects where they've repaid the loans back, and we also have twenty thousand dollars from our housing development fund that we'd like to use for leverage. So the total amount of the projects would be four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And also, as part of the the application, we're required to take our housing rehabilitation guidelines to council once a year for review and update, so we're looking for council approval on those as well.
Hopefully, we we get the grant. I'm curious, though, does the city use that grant money and then act as a mortgage company to to finance the house, or do we buy down rates, or what what do we do?
The contract is actually, it's housing rehabilitation, so it's to rehab the houses. So what we, yes, we we leverage the money to give the housing applicants a loan.
Okay.
And so then we do put a lien against their property until the recapture period is met.
Okay.
And then we release the lien.
Thank you.
Mary Allen, are they paying the whole amount, though?
The families?
Of the reconstruction?
The families?
Yeah.
No, it's depending on what their availability of repayment is.
So it's so it's not like they're paying a hundred percent. Let's say it costs twenty thousand dollars in rehab, they may only pay back five.
Okay.
Depending on their income level, right?
Correct.
I just want to make sure council understands that, because it's not like they're paying the whole amount back.
Right.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Owner occupied, you said, four to six homes? The how do you select the four to six homes? Is it an application that's put in?
Right, we have an application process. We determine eligibility financially, and also, they have to live in their home for at least a minimum of six months. And then we are actually prioritizing the elderly, the physically disabled, and it definitely has to be low to moderate income.
It's a wonderful program.
It's a good program. I've been to many of the grand openings and reopenings, and most of the houses I've been to, the people live.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mary Allen. No other comments, and I'll call for a resolution, please.
Resolution number five-one-nine-seven, a resolution of the mayor and council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for state housing funds, certifying that the application meets the community's housing and community development needs and the requirements of the state housing programs, authorizing staff to take all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities submitted in said application, authorizing the city manager to accept housing funds, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, authorizing the use of program income, housing development funds, and CDBGH, I don't know what that is.
O O H R.
No typo? Funds, and adopting the twenty nineteen twenty twenty owner occupied housing rehabilitation guidelines.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of resolution number five-one-nine-seven as presented. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, item K two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The resolution associated with this would create the steering forum associated with the general plan update project, as well as appoint the membership to the same. If you recall, the adoption of the public participation plan for the general plan called for the creation of a community-based steering forum, a group that would help steer the direction of the general plan, provide community input, and then, once the plan was adopted, actually act as ambassadors and champions in the community for the adoption of the plan with the community vote. So this formally creates that group, that committee, and the appointments to the same. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And we we've been given the list of people, so everybody should.
Mayor, if I if I could, though, just to just to clarify, the resolution creates the forum, so you'll adopt the resolution, if and then by motion, actually appoint the steering forum. The resolution itself doesn't make the appointments, it just establishes the forum as an entity.
Are we doing that here tonight?
Yes.
So we need, so we'll need a motion to approve the the applicant or the candidate.
[coughs]
Okay.
So Paul, can you tell us a little bit, just if people ask how you picked the particular people on the committee?
So, good question. Councilmember Fitzgibbon. So the actual public participa- plan, participation plan, listed the groups of of sort of the interest groups in the community that should be represented on the steering forum, and it was a long list, I think maybe thirty-some groups. And if you recall, during the early discussions on that, we brought up to council, and council added some groups that weren't on there, like artists and and some other representatives. So once that that list of stakeholders, if you were, was was established with your adoption of your public participation plan, then actually, the mayor selected the individuals based on some input and recommendations from myself and the city manager for those areas of representation. So we provided some recommendations, and ultimately, it was the mayor's choice what went on the list.
Yeah, we kind of, in some cases, each category, we might have had two or three names, and then we, when we discussed it and kind of narrowed it down to one person. And then we would be interested, because, you know, we can have a name, but if they don't want to be on it, they may say no. So that's why we usually had a backup or something, and that's really how it was how it was picked. It was, you know, category for like builder, local builder. So then we would pick a couple of local builders and and then discuss them, and then chose one, and if they didn't, then we went to the second choice. So that's that's how it was done. And you all have seen the names, so you have an opportunity to put some input on it, so. Any other questions on that? All right, then, I'll entertain a resolution to establish the steering forum.
Resolution number five-one-nine-eight, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, establishing a general plan steering forum to assist in the creation of the city's twenty thirty general plan update.
McFarland, I move approval of resolution number fifty-one ninety-eight as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, now I need a motion appointing the members of the general plan steering forum. That resolution number fifty-one. Now, the resolution is just a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the committee as presented on the agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do I need a roll call on this one? I don't, do I? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the steering members are appointed. All right, there's no public hearings, and we have no executive session tonight, so we'll move right to reports, and I'm going to start over here with you, Lisa.
Oh, okay. I know Katie brought it up, that she was a graduate of the Hispanic Leadership Institute, and we're starting our fourteenth class, so fourteen years, and so if anyone is interested, they'll, it starts September twenty-fifth, they're held on Wednesdays at Central Arizona College from six to nine P M. So if anyone, you know, would like to participate, the application is available online. And Katie right here, if you have any questions, you can check, ask her about the program. And other than that, nothing much. I know we're all heading to the League of Cities and Towns, so we'll be gone this week, and it's a pretty full agenda. So just, you know, I just want everyone to know that, you know, there's so many topics, and when we go to these conferences, we we learn so much from what goes on in other cities. And so, you know, just examples of what, you know, some of the sessions, you know, there's something on water rights, broadband, census, economic development. The mayor's going to be serving on a homeless task force, so I'm excited that he's going to share what we're doing here in Casa Grande, because I'm sure the other cities would like to hear what we're doing here. You know, you know, and just important topics that are coming up with opioids and vaping. As you know, vaping is a big issue nowadays with with health. Recycling is one of the sessions, so that's just to name a few, but it is a pretty, pretty intense agenda, so I'm really looking forward to participating again this year.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Mary?
I don't have a whole lot to report. Unfortunately, I'm not going to make the the League Conference this year due to some health issues, but I do have some contact with the Pine Top Lakeside Mayor. They have a pretty good recycling program they're doing. My big question to them is, what are they doing with it? And that's kind of the question. I was supposed to meet with them during the conference, and hopefully, I'll have a teleconference with her. But other than that, I keep looking at other alternatives that we have for recycling.
Okay, Donna?
Just a couple of things. The chamber luncheon was last Friday. It was really well attended, and it was on social media and branding yourself. And then, thank you to Black Box. I think that we all received invitations to come out and enjoy one of their plays. It just happens to be this week while while we're gone, but it is nice that they they recognize that we all support their efforts, and looking forward to the League Conference.
Mr. Paul?
I've been primarily busy with trying to contact Congress and senators to to get to their water people to present the plan of harvesting, and it's been pretty well received so far. So I continue, I've, as I say, I think I had mentioned, I talked to McSally's person during the last week or so, and and he was very impressed and took it back to her, so we'll we'll see how it goes, but we're, I'm getting to know a lot of their water people. Most of them, if they're from Arizona, have a water person who you contact and you present it to them, so. I treated mine with to lunch at Ricardo's, so I made a lot of progress. He liked the cheese crisp.
Is that called bribery?
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, Matt?
I don't have a lot either. The Youth Commission is going to the League Conference for the youth portion, so that's exciting for them. And I did read about the Valley Humane Society is now taking certain recyclables out there, so that's another option for people, and they're using it for fundraising as well. So two birds, one stone, and it's way to recycle and help the Valley Humane Society. There you go.
Yeah, I attended the Biz Outlook Luncheon along with Donna, and it was very informative, so thank you to the chamber for presenting that, and looking forward to my first time attending the League Conference as a councilman, so.
Excellent. All right, well, I think report from last week, because I was on vacation.
You don't want to tell us about your trip?
It was, it was great.
What did you do for several vacations?
Golfed. Anyway, nice golf courses, beautiful country, nice weather, eighty-two degrees high. It was perfect. This week, this, yeah, and I've tried fly fishing. Arizona League of Cities, as everybody said, we're going to, and I know I'm I'm also presenting at the First Things First Achieve Sixty Panel on Tuesday morning at nine o'clock in the mayor's forum, and there's four of us, four mayors, that'll be participating in that. Also, on the resolution committee, so we'll be doing the resolutions for next year for the League of Cities, which really will be everything from the Equal Rights Amendment to the no-gallus wastewater issues with Mexico. So there's some pretty big items on the agenda. Also have the League Executive Board meeting, and then I'm on the executive board now, so there will be some transition of leadership presented at the at the conference this year, so try and attend the the final dinner, because it'll be, it'll be a good send-off for somebody. Healer River Indian Community and the Prop two oh two grants, I just wanted to kind of give a shout-out to the to our friends and neighbors to to the north. They will be giving to our charity and the city, as as well as one of those recipients, over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in in grant money this next, or this coming year. So it's it's huge. It's five thousand dollars to the Hispanic, or Panal Hispanic Council. Boys and Girls Club is twenty-five thousand dollars, the Natural Resource Education Center thirty thousand, the city manager's office for high school summer internship program fifteen thousand, and then the Rest Stop, which is a day resource center for the homeless, which they've been part of our homelessness task force, and and she will receive forty-one thousand over the next two years. So big, big shout-out again to our tribal community, to the north, and a big thank you, and a congratulations to all those organizations. Just again, an update on the RTA, which is our Regional Transportation Authority and the taxes that are being collected. I just was notified today that September eighteenth is the Court of Appeals hearing, so it's been moved up quite a bit, which is good, and that hopefully, we'll get a decision and a positive one sooner than later, because it really wasn't getting me heard till November, December, and now it's been moved up to September. So I'll keep you advised. I'm going to plan on attending the the appeals, the the hearings, so I'll let you know what I find out. I think that's all I've got, if anybody else says anything else. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming today.
That was a nice one.